Hello, welcome all. Before proceeding, I pay respects to the Murrimina people as their traditional and original custodians of the lands on which we meet, and I acknowledge the continuing connection of the Tasmanian Aboriginal people to the skies, land and waterways. I pay respect to elders past and present. Before we commence with tonight's council meeting, please let us all pause for a quiet moment of reflection and respect. Thank you councillors, please be seated. Well, good evening and welcome to the Clarence City Council Special Meeting of Monday, the 19th of June 2023. This meeting is being broadcast live on YouTube and what is said in this meeting is not protected by privilege and there is a link to the agenda papers on council's website. Item number two, apologies. We have an apology to the serving from the Deputy Mayor, Alison Ritchie. Otherwise, I see there's a full house and I acknowledge councillor Goine here with us this evening. Welcome councillor Goine and we hope that Mr Beaumont is in good health. Item number three, declarations of interest of councillor or close associate. Are there any declarations from councillors? There being none, we move now on to item number four, which is rates and charges for the financial year 2023/2024. I call for a mover. Thank you councillor Kennedy, a second up. Thank you councillor Chong. Councillor Kennedy.
No, thank you, Mr Mayor. This is something we've workshopped extensively and I have nothing other to say than I support the officer's recommendation.
Thank you councillor Kennedy, councillor Chong.
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor, just very briefly. Obviously, we approved the estimates recently and this is the mechanics of then setting, raising that revenue that we've already agreed that we need. I seek all my colleagues' support.
Thank you very much. Are there any other colleagues wishing to speak to this item? Councillor Mulder, thank you.
I think every councillor should speak to this item, Mr Mayor. Here we are, setting the rates. Yes, the rate was set by default at the last meeting. I would rather that we had set the rate and then trimmed the Capital Works Programme to suit, rather than come up with a Capital Works Programme and then end up with a rate setting. As an observation I will make, say, that we constantly talk about borrowings and the need to service them. And I would talk about the Huon Council, which found itself in a borrowing situation a few years ago, and low and behold, their rate increase this year was 12%. It wasn't 12% at the time they borrowed the money, but it's 12% now it comes time to start paying it back, because if you don't pay it back in an accelerated way, it continues to drag on. And also noting that our 10-year financial plan, we have a capital, a projected rates increase over the next two years of CPI plus 5% for two years, and then year three and four and five, it goes back to CPI plus 0.5. So although these are projections, they are projections based on current understandings. And if those projections come remotely true, we could see next year, not a 6.7% five-intrance, but something in the order of 11 and 12, which is 5% above what the CPI will be at that time, if, you know, if current trends are anything to go by. So with that observation, I create, I will reiterate some of the things I said the last time. If you're going to borrow against asset base, then it's common sense that you borrow against an income-producing asset, not a cost-producing asset. You may do it in order to defray future costs, but future costs in terms of making, like sealing gravel roads, for example, which reduces future costs. But to be borrowing money against a road, to me, is fraught with danger because you're now borrowing against a non-income-producing asset. And that simply means that what you should do is you should draw it down and then you should put money into the strategic reserve to maintain it, which in other words, there's a direct impact on rates now, but not a continuing one with added interest and charges of that nature. In that regard, I noticed that the stormwater rebate is still, the rate is still very low. Given the practical problems that this council faces, the major works coming up resulting from things like climate change and the stormwater and the severe weather events, not to mention the current roads and things and assets which are subject to inundation in any event. And we've just recently did the one behind it, the Hanthick. So anywhere in the city where there are sand dunes and we currently, and we've built houses behind those sand dunes in what were once lagoons and swamps, we should have a future proofing mechanism that says detention basins, pump-out solutions and those sorts of things. Yet in none of our strategic plans are any of those things in here, yet we have a stormwater rate against which we could borrow, against which we could charge a rate that would fund for some of these futuristic road programmes, stormwater programmes. So, and that's my major observation. No, I won't be voting for the particular rate because, as I said, the time when we set the budget estimates at the last meeting, that the problem with that is that there are too many capital projects in there that are high-value capital projects for which we don't need money and which we could have switched our budget, our forward estimates over in not building any more Taj Mahals, but starting to refurbish what we've got, accepting what we've got and using that money to build things such as Pass Road. And here I go again and I'll repeat again, those roads belong, are the things that sort of are built by state grants and then you have bits and pieces like our much-needed bypass, which is a programme, the Richmond Bypass, which this council has a road priority and it was, and it's in the Hobart, Greater Hobart City Plan, yet not a centre funding for it.
Thank you councillor Mulder. Councillor James.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and I did, excuse me, make some comments at the, when we're discussing the estimates and that hasn't changed at all, because at that time, I suggested with a bit of pruning and a very conservative Capital Works Programme, that we could basically come in at 5%. And I have stood by that from day one in the council workshops, and I believe this council could have, and I believe should have, made that change by bringing it down from 6.53 rate increase to something around about the 5%. And I think that is really sustainable in this particular climate. The concerns I have is in fact that we are going through a cost of living crisis and because we have money in the bank and we are borrowing, and I think I'll make a comment about that in a moment, that this is the first time in my experience that we've actually had to bring in a rate increase of the order of 6.5%. On page 68 of the papers from the general manager in his comments about financial management strategy, and I quote, "There has been little change to this document, with the only major change being the reference to council's new borrowing policy and procedure." So we are embarking upon a process by which we are going to borrow. And if you look at the forward estimates that are also in the paperwork here, then in the next few years, there's going to be borrowings of the order of 12 million, and that has been a projection. And I take it being that if the council at the time decides not to proceed down that course, then they have every option to do so. But at this particular stage, on page 69, and I quote, "The long-term financial stability and asset growth of council can be supported through a variety of different measures, including external borrowings." Now, we have always been able to pay for large projects without having to borrow, and that has been really good, sound financial management in this place. And now, for the first time in my experience, and I've been here a little while now, we are going to borrow 6.1 million. Okay, that is for, predominantly for the Pass Road, and we know that needs to be built or constructed because of the demand in the area, and a million dollars for this council chambers or moving towards a redevelopment in this place. So therefore, and it reads on and says, "The purpose of the borrowing policy is provide guidance for borrowing of funds through setting the purposes for which this council may borrow funds, defining the institutions from whom monies can be borrowed, setting measurable borrowing limits and metrics, detailing how borrowings are to be approved and outlining the criteria to be considered when..."
Councillor James, can we just stop the clock, please? Thank you, Miss Ellis. You're referencing page 69, which is actually item number six, which is Long-Term Financial Management Plan and Associated Financial Policies and Strategies. We're currently on item number four, which is the rates and charges for financial year Could I ask you, please, to contain your comments to the item before the chair?
Yes, thank you. Okay, it is relevant, in fact, because of the nature of what we are embarking...
Please restart the clock.
It is relevant, and in fact, we are to borrow 6.1 million, and that is in the proposal for the rates and part of the capital works. So in actual fact, what I'm saying and alluding to here, Mr Mayor, is in fact what is in the rates and charges and the capital expenditure for the next financial year. So, look, that is, that's a fact and we can't get past that. The other point I want to make is that there is a, other councils have in fact been able to bring in a rate increase of a lot lower than that, and I again refer to Kingborough. Kingborough is one of the most advancing councils in southern Tasmania, and their estimate is 4.7%. There's also a large outlay on 16, 19 new full-time permanent positions, and that's going to cost us in the recurrent budget, which equates to our rate increase of 1.6 million or 44% of the 2023/24 budget. I believe that we can undertake savings here, and I believe 5% is a reasonable approach, and we don't have to go down this path of imposing upon the citizens of Clarence with a lot of this Capital Works projects, which are aspirational, and therefore we have really diverted or moved away from what we have in the past adopted as a conservative approach. Unfortunately, I will not be supporting this rate increase. I would support a rate increase of 5%.
Thank you councillor James. Councillor Hume, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Look, we've, as I said when we adopted the estimates in the debate there, we have been through this budget quite extensively, and I believe we're in a position where we need to accept this rates increase if we're going to maintain services at their current level. It's needed to, a lot of the new positions are needed to fund growth. I would also point out that a number of those new staff positions that councillor James referred to are actually funded with revenue that are generated by those positions and therefore are self-funding. I believe, I can't remember the exact number of positions that are in that situation, but for example, there were a couple of new parking ranges that were going to be put on, which would be funded by the expected revenue that would be generated by, you know, those parking ranges enforcing more compliance in terms of parking. So, you know, there was that in the discussions. But as I said in the debate on the estimates, and I still believe this is the case, if you are going to say that we need to adopt a lower rate, and I don't know how valid it is to compare with other councils, because, you know, there are a range of different accounting systems out there, but it is incumbent on anyone who's going to propose a lower rate increase to say, well, what's your alternative budget and what are you proposing to cut? And if I recall at the time we were debating the estimates, and I made that point, councillor James was actually nominated one change that he would suggest to budget, and that was actually to retain a service, the hard waste collection, rather than to cut anything. So, you know, let's be real, if we're going to go for a lower rate increase, and we've been through this quite extensively, then we're looking at a cut to services and I think it behoves anyone who is going to suggest that to nominate what those services should be. What is it that we should deprive the residents and ratepayers of the city of Clarence that they are not receiving in the current budget? And, you know, and then we can have a debate around that, a debate around whether, you know, for the sake of a lower increase in rates, the residents and ratepayers are willing to cop that reduction in services. But, you know, I don't see an alternative proposal at the moment. So in the absence of alternative proposal, we are where we are.
Thank you councillor Hume. Any other colleagues? Councillor Walker, thank you.
Thank you. So I didn't support the estimates in my decade or so, not also, around the decade I've been on council, I've only not voted for the rates on one occasion, and this is now the second occasion. And in saying that, that is not to say that there isn't much that is sound and good in the budget, because there is a lot. And as far as the CapEx programme goes, I support everything that's in, I support, I support almost everything that's in it and certainly enough for me not to just stand, you know, hold my breath until one, two things get taken out. And I support going into debt or borrowing for some of these things to be expedited sooner. I believe Pass Road should be done now, and if that has future costs, that's fine. There will be future benefits as well as immediate benefits for doing so. I believe that the dog park is well overdue and again, benefits from that. And I'll note that, you know, there's registration fees that come from dog owners. So the other point to that is we're again in a situation where mergers are alive and going topic, and for us to go into that process with zero borrowing on our books, well, that's great. Uncle Clarence will save the day and be paying for stuff far else when we're potentially merged in a situation that might not be ideal. I think it is sensible, and we owe it to our ratepayers as they are now, to be smart and to be clear-headed about some of these things ahead. So why am I not supporting it? Well, yes, the cost of living crisis has been noted. When we talk about this process, and I don't think I'm speaking out of school here, really things, things that have, staff have identified some savings that have been taken. The hard waste was removed, but that wasn't a cut inasmuch as there, it wasn't like we had a contractor and an ability to deliver it. So that was, that wasn't a choice, that was something that had to be made. And so this is where I get to the other things. Why am I not supporting it? Because in a high inflation environment, in a cost of living crisis, I think as a group of 12, we needed to make some tough decisions, and I don't believe we did so. I dug out of the old piggy bank, and the cameras won't show it, but there's that little feral sugar glider there with his sharp claws, that's a one-cent piece. One cent. And I can't think of one cent that we as a group took out of the budget that was part of the OpEx ourselves, that we said, no, that's going. We had staff suggestions that might have been followed up, but we as a group, and I think in this climate, we should. So if I'm going to be councillor, cuts, so be it. I note some of the comments from councillor Hume around, you know, naming some things. Well, I'm happy to do so and I'll wear the umbrage. I think fitness in the park is poorly targeted. I think that it isn't something that we need to provide, and I have heard time and time again that people go there are willing to put some money that could be used to charity and other things. Well, if the 30-odd people that turn up would have put in $5, that's $150 for a session and I think you could get someone doing it. Other things? Well, let me tell you that as someone in the health space, I don't think we should be anywhere near the help-to-health project that we do. That is a responsibility that lies with organisations like Primary Health Tasmania. I don't think we should be going, so there's one. Clarence talks, I say zip it. The Art Mobile trailer, I can see some benefits to it, but I think this year we might just have to say no. So there's another one for this year. Let me get some other people offside. Well, you know, we, I think we could halve the commitments we make to the stormwater great safety changes with cycling. If that is paramount, then that should all be spent all in one year. We're doing it on an incremental basis. I think that we could stretch that out a few years later. So there's some things, there's some things that we would be bringing in saying, we as a council are actually making some cuts. But there it is, the one-cent piece, and I don't think we as a team actually shaved one cent off. I think it was officers identifying things and doing it. So that's the reason why I'm not supporting it this time, despite much that's good in it. I think we needed to actually make some cuts because we're high inflationary environment and things are really challenging. So we can be smart about that and there are things that we can do there and still be a council that's delivering an abundance of value to ratepayers.
There are other speakers? There being none, councillor Kennedy, your right of reply, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, I appreciate everyone's comments around the table. We have workshopped this. There was opportunities to take out, to discuss, to debate. This is where we've landed, this is what's in front of us tonight, this is what we're voting on. We all know the cost of doing business is a hell of a lot different to what it was this time last year, and I just seek council support. I'd like to thank the officers for all the work that they've put into this. It hasn't been easy for anyone. There's always winners and losers, I'm afraid, and fitness in the park, for one example, is $25,000. You know, we're talking about a big budget here, and that does put a smile on a lot of people's faces. So I seek colleagues' support and thank you all for your contribution.
Thank you councillor Kennedy. Colleagues, I put the motion noting that as contained within the recommendation, that an absolute majority is required, so that requires seven votes in the affirmative. I'll put the motion, all those in favour. Those against? So carried, eight to three. Thank you. Moving now on to item number five, the annual plan. I'll call for a mover, please, for the annual plan. Thank you councillor Hunter. Seconded councillor Kennedy, thank you. Councillor Hunter.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd like to thank the officers who are putting together the annual plan. I support what's in it, it supports the budget that we've passed, and I seek my colleagues' support.
Thank you. Councillor Kennedy.
I wasn't planning to speak on this, but I'll just say that, you know, we have seen an increase in the department that actually put these documents together, and what a great spend of money, because what a wonderful document it is. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Kennedy. Any other colleagues wish to make a contribution on this item? There being none. Councillor Hunter, there's probably no need for a right of reply. I put the motion, all those in favour. Against? So you're abstaining councillor James. All right, thank you. It's so carried. Moving now on to item number six, the Long-Term Financial Management Plan and Associated Financial Policies and Strategies. I'll call for a mover. Please. Councillor Hume, thank you. A second up. Thank you councillor Hunter. Councillor Hume.
Thank you, Mayor. I did ask a question in the workshop about the Long-Term Financial Management Plan in terms of the surpluses that were being reported, and I've been given an explanation that I find quite satisfactory, which is that there are two reasons for those substantial surpluses. So one is actually an accounting policy that says that the revenue includes, I think it's something like increases in assets, and so that's not actual cash revenue and therefore it's just a matter of accounting rather than a, you know, a real surplus at that level. But plus, there was also, I understood, a need to maintain cash at a particular level, I think it's $25 million, oh no, to maintain $25 million in excess of the infrastructure renewal reserve. So that was the explanation for that. I'm pleased with the new policies, which have been workshopped fairly thoroughly, and one of the things I'm certainly pleased about in terms of our investment policy is that it's looking at a range of investments across growth and also defensive assets, so a mix of investments that will achieve growth but with some mitigation risk. And I certainly like the idea, and I hope we end up doing it, of engaging an investment manager to try and increase those returns for the benefit of our budget, and I seek council support.
Thank you councillor Hume. Councillor Hunter. Thank you, councillor Hume, councillor Hunter.
I think councillor Hume has done a pretty thorough job of outlining a few things. I will just add that it's, I'm pleased to see the Long-Term Financial Plan in a concise document as when I was first elected, trying to figure it out on Excel spreadsheet was extremely confusing. So, it's really nice to package it together for members of the community who might be interested in looking at this.
Thank you, councillor James.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and I thank councillor Hunter for those kind words inasmuch as it's so clear and spelt out for the next few years. For instance, the CPI plus 5% for the 2425 is estimated to obviously be around about the 10%, 11%. Year three, this is the CPI plus 5% going up to 12, and so on right out to obviously 5% to 10% on the Long-Term Financial Management Plan. So they are predictions, and this is what the council has forecast in the way of rate increases over the next 10 years. Interesting to note that in the 2324 budget, there's an estimated surplus of 10.5 million. In 2425, 11.592 million. And it goes up, 2526, there's 14.476. And if you take it right out to, well, let's not go to 3233, but let's make it within, say, 2829, the surplus is predicted to be 15.477 million. So this is really what this council has forecast as far as being in surplus. And as I mentioned earlier, there is that prediction that there will be borrowings of between 10 and 12 million over the next four or five years. So, look, I accept the fact that a council at its annual estimates can review this, they can decide that that's not the best course to take. But by the very nature of having a forecast like this, which is available for the public to peruse, it is, in my opinion, quite frightening to think that this council is going ahead and operating on a surplus, when in fact, and borrowing more and more over the next five to 10 years. And so, look, I just feel that out of this good work that prior councils have done, and I'm not really having a shot at the new councillors, but I believe that they've been inundated with all this financial stuff, which is a little bit overwhelming. And therefore, you know, the officers have put this up, and by and large, I think it's been accepted on the basis that the officers have done all the facts and prepared all the figures.
Councillor James, please, excuse you one moment, please do not reflect upon other councillors during your address. I don't, no, I'm sorry.
Oh, I haven't.
Councillor, take your seat.
Can I continue?
Take your seat.
Oh, okay.
Take your seat. I will not have, I will not have you reflect on councillors for the term or staff in adverse ways you've just done. So please, I'd ask you, remain in your seat, councillor James, I'll call you. I'll call you when I want to hear from you. Until then, you hear from me. Please do not reflect negatively on colleagues or on staff. Councillor James, you have the call. Please, you stop the clock.
Oh, finished.
Thank you, all right, are there any other speakers? Thank you, councillor Warren.
Mayor, I just wanted to draw attention to the line in the investment policy that says that we would consider investments that are consistent with council's sustainability strategy. I would have liked to see something stronger. There are a lot of, not just councils, but well-respected industry bodies who are divesting of fossil fuels at the moment, and it would have been an opportunity to include a stronger statement in our investment policy. But I think if we at least consider investments that are consistent with council's sustainability strategy, we have the opportunity to improve the way we invest.
Thank you, councillor Warren. Councillor Mulder, you wish no contribution? No? Councillor, councillor Walker, thank you.
Yes, the Long-Term Financial Plan, just through you, or maybe you can answer it yourself, but perhaps it's the CEO or the treasurer that may wish to do so. With this plan, what in it is actually binding on us, on what we're signing tonight?
Thank you, I'll direct that question to the CFA, thank you, Mrs Merrill.
Through you, ma'am, as I reflected in the report that goes with the plan, it's totally a, just a document for you to consider. It gets reviewed, or it'll get reviewed every year, but also as part of your budget process, you can change it and adopt something completely different.
There's much in it that I disagree with, there's other bits that make sense, we have to have one. I'm not concerned about voting for this on the basis that it will, it'll be something for us to reflect on, but ultimately, we will sail the ship. This won't be telling us what to do, it's telling us what we could do. So on that basis, I would not urge, but suggest ever so gently that that's one of the reasons, if any councillors around the table are wavering, that you should feel comfort in supporting a document even though there might be elements of it that you find unpalatable.
There, councillor Walker. Councillor Mulder.
At a time of my choosing, Mr Mayor. The forward plan may not be binding, but it is a plan, it is a statement of intent. Right? And of course, we can change our mind down the track, but that doesn't mean that the points, some of the points that councillor Walker raised, aren't valid. We're saying with this plan, we're about to embark on borrowings. And in the previous contribution, I made reference to the impact that is actually, this plan, this plan foreshadows on the rates if we continue with the aspirational project. And councillor Hume has been very quick to point out to people that, although there isn't any savings in this, there isn't any, you know, that we've nominated, one service that we're not going to provide. Well, service is only half of what we do. The other half of what we do is capital works. And if you haven't been listening through the workshops, through the debates in this chamber, about the number of times that councillors in this chamber have identified significant cost savings on the capital expenses side of the life. Let's talk about the Taj Mahal, the sports plaza at Claren and Vale, where none of our sporting communities actually want to go to. They want to stay in their Osney Park Bowls Club, they want to stay in their little squash centre in Alma Street. Yet here we are, on the back of a state government commitment, a promise, funding half of a multi-million dollar expenditure, 16, I think? The Anzac Park Pavilion, there it is. We are going to demolish a park pavilion instead of upgrading it. Instead of upgrading an existing building. No, it mightn't be architecturally clever, but in an era where we're facing cost of living pressures, how dare we start talking about 12%, 15% rate increases in the future in order to fund some of these nice-to-have projects when we could be busy at this stage consolidating, repairing and maintaining what we have? So don't stand around this table and tell me we haven't identified any savings, because we have, we've identified massive savings. In fact, I would like to see us spend a bit more on the maintenance side of the house and a little less on grandiose programmes to put even more jewels in our crown. So that's the point that I'd like to make with this. It is a plan, and I will be doing everything in my power at the next time to try to get us back into a situation where this council does not have to borrow for aspirational projects when we can't even fill the potters in the streets in a timely manner.
Are there any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? There being none, councillor Hume, write a reply, please.
Thank you, Mayor. So, in terms of the issue, and I touched on it in my opening speech, but the issue councillor James raised about the surpluses. So I found the advice that I received, and what that was in relation to was there's an average of $10.5 million in what's called contributive capital assets that are included in the revenue due to accounting standards. So, they inflate the revenue with a non-cash value, and that shows an inflated surplus. Now, that's something that the community may question, and if they question, then we can explain it to them, but it's what the accounting standards say. So if we're not going to, if we're not going to show those inflated revenues but still stick with the accounting standards, does that mean that on a cash basis, we're going to be running, you know, substantial deficits? Now, in terms of councillor Warren talked about ethical investments, and look, I agree that I would have liked to have seen a bit more work done on that area, but I think we may have started the conversation on that a little bit late, because that's something that is a very big conversation. It's one we can start now in preparation for the next financial year, because there's a lot of things to go through, like, for example, agreeing on a definition of what's an ethical investment, understanding what the availability is of ethical investments once we agree on a definition, and also, you know, what is the risk associated with those. So, you know, I'd certainly like to see a lot more information before we have a discussion around that. It's a much larger issue than, I think we sort of had just one or two workshops left when, you know, when we really got into it. So, yes, something we could do more work on, but I think we need a lot more lead time. And councillor Mulder talked about we could make substantial savings in terms of capital. That's possibly true, but at the same time, a couple of points. Any changes we make to expenditure in the capital budget in terms of our policy and which revenue items we allocate to capital and expenditure, it actually wouldn't make any difference to the ratings effort, because we have a policy that the rates revenue is directed towards our recurrent budget, not our capital budget. But I think it's also important to note that when it came to coming up with these estimates for the Long-Term Financial Plan, we were asked about what do we want to keep in, in terms of forward capital items of projects?
Thank you, councillor Hume, thank you very much. Hey, colleagues, there's a recommendation in front of us, and that is from A to F to approve the plans and strategies as set out there. Now, no one's asked me whether they'd want, are we happy to take this as one block, as one recommendation?
Mr Mayor, I would prefer if he went through.
That's all right, thank you, councillor James, well, I thought I'd just extend that courtesy.
Thank you.
So the first one is A, and that is that council approved the revised Long-Term Financial Management Plan. I'll put that motion, all those in favour. And against? Thank you, that's so carried. Moving now on to part B, the council approved the revised financial management strategy, all those in favour. Thank you, against? That's so carried. Moving now on to part C, that is that council approved the investment strategy, all those in favour. Thank you, so carried unanimously, thank you very much. Moving now on to part D, and that is the council approved the investment policy, all those in favour. Unanimously, thank you. Part E, the council approved the borrowing policy, all those in favour. Those against? So carried. Now on to part F, that is that council approved the revised fees and charges, non-rates policy, all those in favour. And that's unanimous, colleagues, thank you very much. Moving now on to item number seven, and that is the Grants and Sponsorship Policy 2023. I'll call for a mover of the motion, please. Thank you, councillor Kennedy, a secondary, please. Councillor Goine, thank you. Councillor Kennedy.
As per the officer's recommendation, thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much. Now councillor Goine, you don't have to stand if you don't wish. But we welcome, we welcome the stranger into the house, and we hope he's not a stranger at all. But your contribution, please. Thank you very much. Any other speakers, please? Councillor James, thank you.
Yes, look, in a nutshell, I'm very supportive of this, and I would seek clarification through the appropriate officer or officers. On page 123, Mr Mayor, and I've got it right, 123, under 2.7, delegation approval limits are outlined in table below. Just with regard to on-demand up to 750, who is the actual approval authority or person on that? Or is that basically in the hands of the programme manager to approve that?
Thank you, councillor James, CEO, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Councillor James, the approving authority is an ELT officer, so it's a member of my executive team. So CFO.
Oh, CFO, is it?
Yeah.
Well, that's one.
People who report directly to me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Right, any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution on this policy? There being none, councillor Kennedy, probably no need for, or would you like a right of reply?
No, I'd just like to say that councillor Chong and myself have been on the grants assessment panel for the last two, three years, and it's just a wonderful thing that we're doing for the community. And yes, I seek colleagues' support.
Thank you, thank you for your service. I'll put the motion, all those in favour. That's carried unanimously, thank you very much. Moving now on to item eight, which is the Council Allowances and Expenses Policy 2023. Is there a mover of the motion? Councillor Mulder, is there a secondary? Thank you, councillor Goine, councillor Mulder.
There, as foreshadowed at the previous workshop, I would like to basically move this motion, but with an amendment. That amendment being, the motion as it stands, replace the full stop at the end and add the words, subject to deletion of the item relating to stationery and postal expenses.
Is that acceptable to the secondary? Okay, so that now becomes the motion. Thank you, councillor Mulder.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The policy has been reviewed and revised, and I must say that I was a little bit surprised to actually see that postal phone come in. The history of the postal allowance was when I was first on council in 2005, that we were all given, I think it was 50 or 100 Christmas cards on a council envelope, stamped envelope. And the idea of that was that we would communicate Christmas greetings to our members. When we eventually got to the point, and sometime after I left council, the first time, that transitioned into a hundred or $200 a year postage allowance. So we would just go in and get 200 postage stamps, or the members of council would at the time, if they felt the need, and they would use them as they needed, like this policy, to communicate with their electors. Well, one of the basics of this election policy is that our travel, and you'll see it in the policy, that these expenses are related to the exercise of our duties, not for self-promotion or for campaigning. Now, I'm not suggesting that you would do that, but in this day and age, I cannot think of why you would have to use $500 worth of postage stamps to communicate with your electorate. That's 10 a week, you know, so, or a bit less these days, given Australian post charges. So that's the basic reason that I'm going to take this particular one out of there, because the last council this was raised, and we actually amended the policy mid-council to remove this postal allowance, and it was a little bit annoying, I must say, to see it reappear in here just put in as a workshop. So I think that it's a very sensible change, and apart from that, I know there are concerns around the professional development allowance and those sorts of things, but I'm afraid, given the way that we do these things these days with insufficient discussion, it's not really, we're not really getting to a position where we can inform them. So, Mr Mayor, I commend the policy in its broad details, and no, I don't agree with 100% of them, but I am, and I thank the councillors for my support in, for supporting the removal of the, shall I say, archaic postal allowance. for my support in, for supporting the removal of the, shall I say, archaic postal allowance.
Councillor, I think before I call on you councillor Goine, so just so that we're very clear here, it is the recommendation as before is here, reads that council endorsed, endorsed the revised council allowances expenses policy 2023 with the removal, subject to the removal of the stationary and postage expenses section, which is on page 10 of the policy. Is that correct? Councillor Mulder?
That's correct. I mean, I, I, I just had with the deletion, but with removal, that's the thing.
Thank you. All right. I'll just make the other point too. It, it's a bit untidy to bring this stuff on the fly. This is very simple, I get that. But in future, I would just ask that we look at circulating these amendments in, well, in advance, so colleagues have an opportunity to, to consider them. But councillor Goine, again, you can remain in your, all right, thank you.
I just wanted to seek the fellow councillors' support. I know for me, council is actually a sole source of income. So being able to access funding for personal development, I've far exceeded my personal budget with personal development this year. So it's nice to see particularly the total expenditure for the four years, so that those of us that are new can, you know, receive more training initially as we ease our way into our roles. So yes, I seek my colleagues' support.
Thank you councillor Goine, and I, I did listen to your contribution, thank you very much. The CEO just pointed out that there will also have to be a tidy-up as well on page five, which references the postage and stationery costs. But of course, that's, that's an admin. Well, any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? Councillor James?
Yes, Mr Mayor. And before I go into a significant professional development programme, there is a typo on page four. You know, to be professional, local government association.
Thank you for pointing that out councillor James, that'll be corrected.
Okay, thank you. Now, I am pleased that the, the clarification of the, those members in this house, in this place are able to access the significant professional development programme. Now, initially, I thought it was going to be 12,500 each, and I really questioned that at the time. And I was, and in this policy, it's quite clear that it's, it's for all of us to participate. And the only question I'd have in relation to that is that, even notwithstanding, it's got to come back to this place for ratification. But is there any way in which a member may be limited to participate in that 12,500? Or while they, first in, best dressed, can grapple with and probably utilise all of that money? And that's basically the end of till next estimates in the four. So my question through you, Mr Mayor, to the general manager. It will come back to council for ratification. But is there anything stopping a member seeking to have the full amount for their course, which may go on for a week or two weeks, and substantial fees associated with it?
Thank you. Before I call on the CEO, just make the point that I direct where the questions go. So you can ask the question to me, and then you can't be telling me which staff member, which council officer answers the question. I will call on the CEO, but in future, put the question to me, please. Thank you, CEO.
Thank you, Mayor. The structure of this part of the policy requires that any request for that, that training through that, that amount of money specifically allocated comes back to council for approval. So it will be at council's will and whim, if I can put it that way, as to whether there's an approval. And if there was more than one request, then it would be up to council to determine how it wanted to prioritise that, including whether it wanted to over-expend on the budget on a particular year and, and put, you know, more than one person through a programme.
Thank you, CEO. Councillor James?
Yeah, look, thank you, Mr Mayor, and I appreciate that. I thought I asked the question through you to the CEO, but anyway. Under memberships and subscriptions, it refers to council will pay council's membership and subscription fees to bodies and organisations whose activities are relevant to the role of councillors and where the councillor actively participates in the body. My question is, does that, can that raise a conflict of interest in as much as if council is paying for the councillor's membership or subscriptions? That that person who is obviously, has an involvement with a particular organisation, and that particular organisation may seek funding through, for a grant or whatever, would that person then have to declare an interest?
I'll, I'll take that question, thank councillor James. As you know, declarations of interest are up to individual councillors. But I would be very surprised if anyone in this chamber would, would, would act in that way. Clearly, that is a conflict of interest, clearly. Now, I can't direct, nor can you, anyone to declare that interest. It's up to the individual to make that call. But a lot of these things here too, you notice the rider here is that the activities are relevant to the role of coun, to the role of councillors, where the councillor actively participates in the body. It is, in my view, something the CEO would, in the first instance, make a judgment call on. If he then, if he then makes a judgment call that doesn't please the, the elected representative, it's an issue that I would then discuss with the elected representative. If that's not resolved, it would then come back to a closed session, closed consideration of this council for everyone as a total to, to consider. But just making the point too, this is about professional development and furthering, you know, the, the capacity of elected representatives to better serve in a role as councillors. So I'm a glass half-full type of guy, and I think that most of my colleagues are too. But I hope that answers your question.
Yes, I just, well, the question really, Mr Mayor, and you answered almost to the, to the latter, but there is the potential for conflict of interest.
Is that your contribution councillor James?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? Thank you councillor Hume.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I, I would like to advocate for the $500 stationary allowance to stay in. It's not something that I personally am going to use because I'm very much the digital age and like to do a lot by, you know, sort of email and, you know, read documents on my laptop and so on. But having said that, I can envisage situations in which councillors would use it, and it would be reasonable for them to claim those expenses. Having said that, it's not something I'm going to die in a ditch over. So if I get an indication through the debate that, that others will support my position, then I'm going to vote this down and foreshadow an amendment. But if, if not, then I'll support it.
Thank you councillor Hume. So just to be clear here, you've, you've foreshadowed the original recommendation. If councillor Mulder's motion is...
Sorry, I'm saying, if I get an indication through the debate that that's a position to be supported, then, then yes, but otherwise I'll vote for the amendment.
Well, I'll, I'll take that as your little shout.
$500 each way. $500 each way, you're like, what next?
Thank you councillor James. Councillor Hunter, councillor Walker, councillor Dugga, councillor Warren, councillor Chong, councillor Kennedy, would anyone like to contribute to this debate? Councillor Walker, thank you.
Not particularly, and yet I will. So a couple of things to note, for those playing at home. I think it might be really useful to go back on the YouTube archives to 2019 and see the discussion around the last one, lest there be any historical revisionism around the table. I note that if unsuccessful, councillor Hume has foreshadowed an alternate where the postage comes back in. Should that, should this motion be unsuccessful, and Alderman Hume's motion subsequently be unsuccessful? I foreshadow another motion, which is that we reconsider this mo, this matter in three meetings heads, which I think is, and I'll just confirm with you that that would still be totally fine as far as the timelines go.
Well, you've foreshadowed that motion, that'll be up to colleagues. So we've got two in front of you, well, one actually.
Statutory, yeah.
But, but no, thank you councillor.
Look, I do thank Alderman Mo, councillor Mulder for the, the improvement around this. I think it is reasonable for us to, 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 to take that out. It was taken out in the previous council, and I, I think that for consistent, that should be consistent and, and stay up. I think there should be a policy around this place, and I think that there's much in it that's right. But I, I do have some concerns. I don't, I don't agree with the $6,500 being front-end loaded. That's, it's someone can come into this place, spend it within two months and be gone. There, there's no, there's nothing around that. And I actually think that the other process where it was, you know, potentially building up over time allowed people to see what was of interest, but also has to there. So I think that that, that is problematic, and that's, that's one of the things that concerns me. Again, through you, Mayor, and to wherever it goes. Can I get some confirmation that AICD membership has ever been reimbursed through this policy?
So, yeah.
Thank you for the question through you, Mayor, and not that I'm aware of.
Without naming every, everything that comes into my head, are you, can you, can you give me some examples of other memberships that have been used in this, this space?
I'd have to take that on notice.
So, put it this way, should I, it, it, the way that it, it, it's very hard for me to understand what the guardrails are around this. And I'm looking at that wondering whether someone that wants a subscription to The Economist can get that ticked off? Is that, would that be a yes or a no?
That would be a no.
That would be a no. What about then the venerable Institute of Public Affairs, that free-market think-tank that's been going around for, for decades, where its membership does provide some resources to members? Would that, that would be arguably helpful in conducting one's duties on a council?
Councillor Walker, you're a very persuasive individual. If you can mount that case successfully and the chief executive officer agrees with you, then that's what you're looking and you think it's relevant to your duties to perform as a councillor of the city of Clarence?
So, so again, I'm, I'm stuck with this thing where this, this policy is, is devoid of what I think is substantive guardrails. And, and again, that's a reason why I'm, I'm in this space. Another question I have...
Excuse me, councillor Walker, before we continue here, just, just to ensure people at home are fully cognisant of what we're discussing here, costs here are included in that global cost for the council expenditure limit.
Yep.
So now, that's not an aspiration, that, that's, that's a limit. So I'm not saying that everyone's, and past practice would indicate quite clearly that there are some that would, wouldn't utilise it.
Yep.
At all. So that, they're the guardrails that are there. And then it's a judgment call on individual councillor. All this is publicly available though as well, let's not forget.
Which is good, yeah.
This will be quarterly reports.
Well, which, 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 again, I thoroughly support. But, but again, I think, I think some guardrails about what's in or, or, or out is, is totally, totally appropriate. And I don't feel that that's quite there yet. I'd like some comfort then with those quarterly reports, that each and every dollar that goes to an Elgat event that a councillor attends will be part of the published documentation against a councillor's name in the quarterly report. Can I have confirmation and comfort on that, please?
It's currently presented in the quarterly report. It's actually listed, the professional development...
Professional development's listed.
But the costs are also limit, are also available too in the, in the quarterly report.
Yep. So just again, to confirm, if it's an Elgat thing, then it's no different to any other professional development that's approved. It is each and every cent of a weekend course on a something, or the comb-over fest that is the annual, the annual conference, each and every cent of that, when a councillor attends, is, is, is listed. Even though it won't be itemised, it is, it is part of what is published in the quantum, in the quarterly report.
Councillor, if I maybe try to be very clear here, this is public money. We will be as transparent as we possibly can. I give an undertaking now to ensure that is available, like every other expense.
It is, it is listed and published.
It will be. If it's not, if it's not currently.
Yep.
It certainly will be in future quarterly reports, absolutely.
As well it should be. All right, look, so I'm in a situation again where I just think we should have spent, spent more, more time on this. It's, it's something that every council should have, and we do welcome, you know, and encourage people to undertake professional development and the, the actual costs of, you know, or, or, you know, associated with things. So I'm not against that, I'm not saying shut down. I just don't think this sits where it should and is robust enough, noting the improvement that the, that the mover of the motion has made. So at this point in time, I'm sitting here foreshadowing the foreshadow.
Councillor Warren, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I rise to give some clarity to councillor Hume on the way this motion might be going. I fully support the amended motion put by councillor Mulder. We did have this discussion in the last term, as councillor Walker commented. And just to sidetrack, I'm comfortable with the guardrails in this because it's impossible to state what's in and what's out when you don't know what opportunities might be coming up in this term. We can't be too prescriptive. We can just rely on good judgment and council having the final say, and I'm comfortable with that. But yes, regarding the discussion we had maybe four years ago, I, I recall an alderman at the time who came into the chamber with a ream of paper, a box of stamps. I can't remember whether or not he brought the printer, but it seemed that he was sending letters in triplics to a number of people. We all had a good laugh and then we voted to take it out.
But just, just to ensure that we're keeping to the truth, there's actually two reams of paper. Any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? Councillor Hunter, thank you.
I'm not too fussed, to be honest, about the $500. I won't be using it, but if someone else has a reason to, if they don't communicate with people that use email and things, so be it. But I'm happy to support the motion as it is. In regards to the membership, membership and subscriptions, then I can't see myself using that, and probably no one will, but I like to err on the side of someone might use it and it might come into effect for someone. And I like to trust people rather than be fearful of how it will, will be used. So I'm happy to support the new motion.
Thank you councillor Hunter. Anyone else wishing to speak? Before I call on councillor Mulder, I'll enter the debate now too as a councillor. And I'd just like to thank colleagues, but particularly the CEO, Mrs Double Day. This has been an exhaustive process. Last week, I was in Canberra for a national local government association conference, which will be reported as it ought to be in the quarterly report. And in talking with colleagues from around the country, let me assure you that what we have before us this evening is best practice. And earlier this year, when we started this process, I did a bit of research looking at other bigger councils around the country. And this is a quality document. So to Mrs Double Day and the CEO and his, and their team, thank you very much. With regards to professional development and, and subscriptions in particular, some, and councillor Walker referenced AIC, Australian Institute of Company Directors earlier this evening, his contribution. There are insidies, if you like, for people to join the institute when they do the AICD course. There's a substantial reduction in, in the actual upfront cost to do the course. So that we actually benefit there to rate pays too, if someone here wished to, wished to do the company directors course by actually joining the AICD. With regards to reporting, I'll refer, excuse me, excuse me, I refer colleagues to page 12, item 11, under the heading reporting, where it says, "Details of expenses incurred by the councillors will be outlined in each quarterly report to council and the annual report. These reports are published on council's website." So as I mentioned earlier this evening, this, we all know this, these are public funds that we're talking about here. Professional development is important. Us being able as individuals, or as elected members rather, to, to acquit ourselves, to do our duty as we've been elected to do is also important. No one should be disadvantaged. Everyone should have the same opportunity and access to resources to do that within the parameters of the Local Government Act and this policy. So I thank colleagues for their contribution. And now ask councillor Mulder for his write-up reply, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And I, I do share the, the, I do appreciate the, the contributions, not only of the council, but as you rightly point out, all these documents are high quality. All these documents are well thought out. All these documents are produced by staff, and I have yet to find one which wasn't of a high calibre. But they're advisory documents, and we need to understand that it is their job to advise. The quality of that advice may not, may always be there. The responsibility as to whether we accept that advice is ours, and is no reflection at all on the people who prepared that advice. And, and, and I'd just like to sort of get this idea that if we don't agree with the advice somehow or other, we aren't being respectful and we aren't being appreciative of the quality of the advice. A couple of matters were raised, the question of conflict of interest. Now, Mr Mayor, it's been a longstanding statement in this chamber in particular that conflicts of interest are a matter for the individual councillor. They're actually decreed by the Local Government Act. It's an offence under the Local Government Act not to declare a conflict of interest and to participate in the... and to participate in a debate where one exists. So let's get that bit clear. Secondly, there is also a longstanding policy here that there is no conflict by mere membership of an organisation. You've got to be a member of the executive of that organisation for there to be any conflict between it. For example, if you're on the board of the Clarence Football Club, then you have to declare an interest when matters relating to the Clarence Football Club have come before us. But if you're an ordinary member, you're an ordinary rural owner, Mr. Mayor, then no, there is no conflict. I'm an ordinary member of the Belleroy Yacht Club. That does not put me in a conflict when the Belleroy Yacht Club come down here on a planning matter, unless I was to be foolish enough to become a member of the board, or should I say, the members were foolish enough to make me a member of the board.
Ordinarily, I'd ask you not to reflect negatively on elected members, but in this instance, I'll let that go.
I'm allowed to do so. I mean, self-deprecation has to be the hallmark for someone with a sense of humour. The other point is that I think Alderman Walker has a very good, councillor Walker has a very good point in relation to tagging what the professional development's been spent on, not just for Elgat, but I think the quarterly report just puts out the conferences and all the rest of it, and I think it would be a vast improvement in transparency and accountability if that was actually documented in the report about which organisations or which professional development opportunities the member had taken advantage of. So that's just food for thought. I don't intend to try to move an amended motion on the thing, but as a point, I would think that that would be a question of transparency.
Thank you, councillor Mulder. We'll put councillor, put the amended motion by councillor Mulder, seconded by councillor Goine, all those in favour. Those against? So carried. Thank you. That now concludes the formal part of our meeting this evening. Thank you to those members of the public who may be joining us from home. We look forward to seeing you again next week, same place, same time. Thank you very much. Please close the feed.